I'd like to call the meeting in order. This is Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
President.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
President.
Mr. Allen?
President.
Mrs. Brochus?
President.
Mrs. Lafferty?
President.
Mrs. Marshall?
President.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporny?
Here.
And Mrs. Walwizer?
Here.
We have a call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters related to NFT labor negotiations, confidential employment matters, and employment litigation. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Mr. Bowman, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I have quite a few things. It's been a busy couple of weeks here at Neshamene. So this past Friday and Saturday night had the pleasure of attending Jim Night at Neshamene High School, which is celebrating its 70th anniversary this year. The theme was already there yet and featured exhibition dances centered around eight destinations. It's really hard to describe the unbelievable energy level sights and sounds on display at Jim Night without actually being there, but I can tell you that Jim Night bar was raised once again this year by both red and blue teams. As any of you who have been involved in any way with Jim Night know, this is a massive effort. That involves not only students who spend weeks and months preparing and practicing, but also high school teachers, administrators, support staff, custodians, facility staff, and student floor crew and video crew, scores of parent volunteers who help with decorations and props, the nine judges that donate their time, community business leader, families, individuals who provide all kinds of support, our police and first responders who help us manage and sell out crowd and keep everybody safe. We thank all of them for the Jim Night tradition going strong. We congratulate red and blue team captains and color captains for their hard work, and Jim Night advisors, Miss Amy Garrick and her team of helpers and faculty team advisors for another very successful Jim Night. It is absolutely an amazing event, probably one of the most inclusive high school events you will ever see anywhere. It is just a tremendous tradition here at Neshamene. For those of you keeping score, this year it was blue team that got to carry the trophy on Saturday night with a score of 43 to 30, and we congratulate them. While we talk about Jim Night pretty much dominates this time of year, we did have other big events happening around the district. On February 21st, Carl Sandberg held their 31st annual tour Tower of Power event. The gym was filled with teams of four students that each had an hour to build the tallest tower they can use with supplied materials such as straw and tape, with prizes given for towers and also themed costumes. On February 23rd, Maple Point hosted the annual Coaches vs. Cancer Charity Basketball Game against Carl Sandberg Middle School to a sellout crowd. Questing Middle School completed their performance of The Drowsy Chaperone, a fun musical featuring some terrific 1920s era costumes and music. This week had the two middle schools performing their musicals Freaky Friday, the musical Carl Sandberg, and Legally Blonde Jr. at Maple Point. Tickets and showtimes can be found on school websites. Finally, I want to congratulate our high school boys and girls bowlers who are heading to the state competition on March 15th and 16th in Lancaster, and three of our wrestlers who will be competing at the Pennsylvania PIA double A state tournament in Hershey this weekend. So congratulations to them, and that's all I have, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mrs. Burns?
There was no signups.
Okay. That brings us to our first action item of the night. I'd like to make a master motion for item 2.01 and 2.02, and I will read 2.01. Administrative appointment of superintendent of schools. Whereas there is a vacancy office of superintendent of the Neshamene School District, whereas the Board of School Directors of the School District desires to elect Jason M. Bowman to serve as district superintendent, and whereas Jason M. Bowman is agreeable to serve as district superintendent in accordance with the term of the District Superintendent Employment Agreement prepared by the School District Solicitor, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors elects Jason M. Bowman to be superintendent of the School District for the term of five years commencing on July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2029, in accordance with the Pennsylvania Public School Code as amended. And be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors approves the District Superintendent Employment Agreement as prepared by the District Solicitor and presented at this meeting and authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute said agreement on behalf of the School District. I have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 9-0. Congratulations, Mr. Bowman. I'd like... Yeah, 20 minutes to go.
So I really just want to thank the board for this tremendous opportunity and your confidence, both in me and my entire cabinet. It really is a true honor and a privilege to serve the community and school district. Where I grew up, graduated with my wife Denise, who's here this evening, and where we have both lived almost our entire lives, where we chose to raise our two boys, who are both Neshamene graduates as well. We are extremely fortunate here in Neshamene to have a tremendous team of administrators, support staff, teachers, who all work together every day to foster an environment where our students feel valued, supported, and are inspired each day to reach their full potential. I'm excited to continue to work closely with this school board, our staff, and the entire Neshamene community to address the challenges we face as a school district and to build upon the many strengths of the Neshamene School District. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, and best of luck. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a master motion for 2.03 certificated appointments, 2.04 certificated leaves of absence, 2.05 support retirements, resignations, end of assignments, 2.06 support appointments, and 2.07 support leaves of absence.
There's a master motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Brochus. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 9 to 0. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to place a motion on the floor, 2.08. Resolved that Neshamene Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached bids for March. They involve the Court Creek Elementary intersection.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments or questions?
Is it possible for somebody to just give a brief recap of what it is so that it's on record so the public knows?
It's a bid. The bid title is Court Creek Elementary Single and Roadwork, and it's the roadwork including intersections at the new Court Creek Elementary. And the bid charge is $1,679,167.90, and the awarded bidder is R. Blair Corporation. Say it again.
That bid subtracted by the grant.
Correct. Yes.
So the original estimate on this bid was 1.9 million. The bid came in underestimated, as Mr. Sullivan said, just under 1.7 million. We also have a $500,000 grant that was secured or helped to be secured by Senator Farrey's office. That'll go towards this work as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 9 to 0. 2.09, Mr. Allen?
Again, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd place a motion. I'd like to place a motion on the floor, 2.09, for the Bucks County Technical High School, an amendment to our Articles of Agreement. Whereas the Neshamene School District has partnered with other lower Bucks County school districts to form the Bucks County Technical High School, and whereas over 300 Neshamene students attend the Bucks County Technical High School annually, and now therefore be it resolved, the Neshamene Board of School Directors approves the attached revised Articles of Agreement as edited between the partnering lower Bucks County school districts and authorizes the Board Secretary to certify and execute the vote certification after a roll call vote on the approved changes and their file attachments that were sent out to the board.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sporny. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I'd like to explain the motion.
Thank you.
In our Articles of Agreement with the partnering school districts, for a good 10 years before we renegotiated the current agreement, the Bucks County Technical High School did not carry a fund balance. Any money that we paid towards the districts paid for our students that wasn't used had to be returned at the end of each school year, which meant without having an emergency fund balance, things would happen. Something would break, you know, air handling unit, something large. They would need to come back to the districts and ask for that money in a resolution each time. So when we were negotiating the Articles of Agreement, Dr. Pesky at the time pointed that out, and we all, districts at the time, we agreed to build in the ability for them to carry a fund balance. Just the timing of the issue was that our Articles of Agreement run for one more year, whereas our agreement, the amendment to allow them to carry a fund balance actually ends this June. So we had to, I proposed a motion to approve that they could hold the fund balance for at least another year till we renegotiate the agreement. That's what that motion is about. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 9 to 0. Items for approval at the public board meeting at the end of the month. 3.01 Routine Business Matters, 3.02 The Toshiba Lease, 3.03 Overnight Trips, 3.04 Sunday Facility Usage. That brings us to our committee reports. Business Operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Our next Business Operations meeting is the first week in April, so the date will be forthcoming. It'll be about the budget and what we're looking to do with that.
Thank you. Educational Development, Mrs. Brochus? Probably no report. Yeah. No report, yep.
No report at this time.
It's Carlos? Okay, that's right. I'm sorry.
The next meeting is on March 12th, 6:30 it'll be in this room.
Thank you. Facilities and Planning, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Facility and Planning Committee met February 15th, 2024 in this room. A number of items we discussed were, was an update on the high school fieldhouse redesign. At the time, our architect, Speesels, presented us with some ideas that we had requested for prefab construction. We got some numbers attached to that. I believe Ms. Hollenbeck and I agreed that it was kind of a 50/50, but what we need is an explanation on a timeline, because that's what it's coming down to. How soon we can get this built around the school, high school schedule, especially graduation, how that's going to impact us, and we will get an update on that at our next facility meeting next week.
Which is March 14th.
March 14th. We got an update on the Court Creek Elementary. They took us through a number of items on the, and what's coming up on the punch list. We got an explanation of the, or, yeah. There was some assumption that we had some furniture in storage that we would be using for the new Court Creek Elementary, and apparently we were we're looking at buying new furniture. And anyway, that's, we were getting, given some ideas of what that's going to look like. We began very early discussion about the redistricting process and our timeline on that. We will have further discussions on that. I know it's of interest to the public. We will be discussing that further in facilities coming up and ongoing discussion. Got an update on the storage under the stadium. We were, when we enclosed the new stadiums, we were under the, the reasoning was that we would be able to use that for storage. A little hiccup in our planning on that was we were told we weren't going to be able to use it for storage. We asked our facility director, Mr. Cogden, to go back and have a meeting with the powers that be and ask, you know, why not? And that meeting was scheduled. We came back. Is, it really boils down to fuels, petroleum, explosives, things like that, that we would be storing there for our vehicles. That needs a fire suppression system, so we are waiting for some information on what that'll take to, so we can make full use of that facility. I had asked for an update on our building issues as far as the doors. Yeah, we had to keep playing with the doors because the, you know, we had positive pressure in the buildings the end of last year. That was some issue because doors weren't closing properly fast enough. There's always that issue of somebody possibly being able to cut into the building. That has all been, for the most part, resolved, or at least as far as the air handling units that caused the issue. We have a line on what, what we're going to do to address that. But the doors have all been secured and are functioning properly at this time. And that was about it, other than some update dating. I had asked for our coming facility meeting to get an update on our PM program, the software that we put in, and our COVID issues that we had, not issues, mitigation that we used, including the UV emitters and ionization. And I'd asked for an update of, because we invest in that equipment, and I think that we should know where we're at with that and that it's all still functioning as required. And as I stated, our next meeting for the Facility and Planning Commission is, I'm looking at the wrong paper, March 14th, 2024, which is coming up, is that next Thursday? I believe, in this room. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Policy, Mrs. Lafferty?
Just, our next meeting is March 20th in this room at 6:30.
Thank you. Representatives' reports. Mrs. Walwizer?
I had my first meeting with the IU, first in-person meeting, on February 20th, and these are the highlights. So they were promoting their Ambassador Academy Program where they have, this is the seventh cohort, and they have 20 members from throughout the IU who have, this is an opportunity for them to enhance their leadership abilities. And so they had, they had them do small presentations, and then they take their new applicants this spring, later this spring. There was also an update on transportation, and so the IU runs different transportation throughout different districts. But they also offer professional development opportunities, and they are now extending that to districts, district drivers. So they just had their first one last month at Pen Ridge. So if that's something people are interested in, I can get information on that continuing going forward. They also are having their Fab Lab Summer Camp enrollment is open now, and that is the new science building. It's really cool. That's actually where we had the meeting, and they have a lot of great science and tech in there, and they just had a huge grant, so there's even more to come. And then finally, they are offering something called the Carrying Community Awards, where you can, anybody can recognize somebody throughout the community who has done an extraordinary contribution to support or assist Bucks IU students and programs. So it can be, it doesn't have to be in district, but if you want to nominate someone, you can mention it, and I have information on that as well. So that was pretty much it.
You? Neshamene Education Foundation.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan. The Neshamene Education Foundation is hosting the annual Harlem Wizards Fundraising Game at Neshamene High School next Saturday evening, March 16th, in Gym 3. Our Neshamene Dream Team, says here, Dream Team, of faculty and staff members held their first practice of Tamaka this afternoon, getting ready to take on the Wizards in what is always a very exciting and entertaining game, which it really is. Tickets can be purchased online at neshamene.org/wizards. The next NEF Board meeting will be held here at Maple Point Middle School on Monday, March 11th at 4:00 PM. Members of the community are welcome to attend and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Sporny. PSBA liaison, Mrs. Marshall?
I actually have one now. The PSBA is currently accepting applications. There's a March 15th deadline for the PSBA Trust Student Scholarships. Those are student leader scholarships established by PSBA Trust to provide a one-time $2,500 or $5,000 scholarship to each of four recipients recognized as graduating seniors from PSBA member districts who have demonstrated ongoing leadership and meet the criteria which they failed to lay out for one of the four available scholarships. So anybody who, students are encouraged to apply by March 15th for the opportunity to get money.
Thank you. Tech School, Mr. Allen or Mr. Sporny? Who's, who's the lead? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Bucks County Joint Board met February 26th at 7:30 in the Tech School Boardroom. Mr. Sporny and myself attended to start with our student representative report, which, by the way, I don't know if I mentioned that Mendis Colas is the senior class president, and she is one of ours at Neshamene. Just, I don't think I ever mentioned that before. In Student of the Month, congratulations go out to, in 12th grade, Riley Russell of Neshamene, and in our Schools for Life, Ms. Hayden Hunt, made Student of the Month. The Bucks County Technical High School Chapter of the National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society will conduct 36 new members and, into the National Honor Society and 21 new members in the National Technical Honor Society. And that will be on Thursday, February 29th. Five different competition days for the Skills USA, and 21 Tech School students won first place. And we'll be moving on to states during the month of April in Hershey. So we're very proud of our students over there. They do an excellent job every year. We're well represented by them this year. The, to board business, we got an update on our building projects, and they are going well. There are a handful of control issues with some of the environmental equipment that we're still working out. As we found out in our Facility and Planning and our buildings here, there's still a number of COVID issues and supply chain issues, and they have boiled out into some equipment arrived, set up, ready to go, to find it's not exactly wired correctly, because things kind of got stopped and then quick put together and then sent out on jobs. We are working our way through that. They are not affecting the students in any way, shape, or form that they did early on, but these are just minor control issues. And we got an update on Phase 3, which is some further development of our, I think, the fire suppression system over there and some technical wiring, you know, anyway. We have, right now, that will be happening over the summer, and they have basically remapped out how the rooms will be moved around in the springtime to get started on that. And that's, we need to discuss that because that's a concern to the parents of, you know, what do you, why you move in my students? And that's why. We need, for there are a timeline to get it done over the summer, some of that work will begin in the spring. And I did want to mention one last item here that I'm very excited about, not excited, but happy about. The, we get a number of grants. Usually they're, they're of smaller numbers than this, but then Tech Schools often don't get money from the Department of Education. We get it from other sources. But the Pennsylvania Department of Education, during a competitive equipment grant, gave the Bucks County Technical High School $84,994. Why that's kind of amusing is because other technical high schools got $85,000. We have no idea why we didn't get the last bit of that. It's been earmarked for some welding equipment that'll bring our welding department certification up to a little more modern times, some equipment that we didn't have. And I keep getting updates on the salon, the beauty salon, the hairdressing stations and things like that, that that department has been begging us to do something with. So that money has been earmarked. We're glad to have it. The next meeting for the Bucks County Technical High School will be March 25th. And that concludes my report to Tech School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the closing of the meeting. Anyone from the public wish to approach the podium? All right. I asked. Any future topics? Board comment?
I would just like to congratulate Mr. Bowman again for his appointment to superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Alba. I too would like to congratulate Mr. Bowman on his appointment, and I would also like to thank him for his service that he's provided as substitute and acting superintendent over the last year. It's been an interesting year, and we are continuing to move forward, and I expect great things from him and his cabinet moving forward. So I just set a high bar, but I know you guys will meet, breach it. Anyone else?
Yes. I apologize, Mr. Sullivan. I should, I was gathering my notes here. I want to thank you, Mr. Bowman, for stepping in as acting superintendent. I think you did a fantastic job, and I am looking forward to working with you moving forward. I have all confidence that Neshamene is in extremely good hands. And I also wanted to, again, Jim Night, how many years now?
70.
70. Can you imagine something of a high school nature of a community? 70 years that we have had that without fail every year. And I was able to, last minute panic, I couldn't find it online, but my fellow board members pointed me in the right direction, so I was able to log in for Saturday night, and my family and I enjoyed watching it on my little laptop. Well, I enjoyed it. I don't know what they did. But it, I always like to remember, it reminds me of my time. I didn't attend Neshamene, but I was part of the community. My friends attended Neshamene, and while I went to my high school, Egan, in Fairless Hills, but I spent almost as much time here on the hill, not here, but in Langhorne, and Jim Night, which I'd never heard of, you know, no idea what they were talking about, but I get roped into, you know, working on floats, working on, with my, you know, my neighborhood friends. And they are some of the happiest memories I have, and I'm just so glad that we are able to continue it here in the community, and that's it.
Anyone else?
Sure, Mr. Sullivan, a quick, quick comment. Jim Night is really amazing, and you know what? You can't really appreciate it until you take part in it. I've tried countless times, like a lot of people, to explain Jim Night, and then you kind of stop explaining it because you just realize they can't really get it, so it is really great and great memories. Mr. Bowman, congratulations on full confidence in everything they bring to the table. I did want to point out quickly, Mr. Allen, I think you mentioned the redistricting or potential redistricting that's potentially in process, and I've been asked it a few times in the community, and just to, I think, put some clarity to it. So planned opening for the elementary schools, end of, end of this year, December timeframe. I believe it's a one-to-one full Pearl Buck to the new elementary school shipped at that time till the end of the '24, '25 school year, which then coming back for the '25, '26 school year would be that redistricting. So really, there's, I think there's about 18... I think there's about 18 months until that actual opening, so I think we may have a little bit of time. But just to... I'm only mentioning it only because I've been asked several times what is going on with all that, and just so it is just a one-to-one, and then the redistricting is really that next year when there may be some sled shifts.
That I saw and some concerns, and so I thought it best that we mention that we're still working on the long-term plans of what that's going to look like, which, as public, if you certainly have a right to input, I believe the Facilities and Planning Meeting would be the place to show up, and, you know, we can have a one-on-one back and forth, unlike public meetings where it's a little harder to do that.
And there's always plenty of available seats at those committee meetings. All right. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.